All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board.
Hold up.
Okay.
I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Esposito seconds. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. Before we do anything, I do want to make an announcement. We made this at the nine AM call, but for those who weren't there this morning, next month, at the conclusion of the June 2024 meeting, ZBA will be releasing a draft of its new rules of procedure and application forms for public comment. We've spent a long time working on these updates and are excited to share them with you. Follow the, following their release, there will be a 28-day public comment period for you to provide feedback on these new rules and forms. Be on the lookout for further information next month. And with that, we will now take continuances or withdrawals. Sorry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Tim Barton. I'm with the Law Office of Thomas R. Reins. I'm here with regard to the case on page nine, numbers 39523S and 39623Z. I'm representing Chicagoland Materials LLC. This is a case for a type five or a classified recycling use. And we still, we need one more continuance to complete the approvals. The, this is a, as you know, it's a sensitive matter. And we're hoping that we can get the full complement of the board by the time this comes up.
Okay. All right. So the, this is calendar numbers 39523S and 39623Z will be continued to July 19, the 2 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Right. Thank you.
Good afternoon again, Chairman. Nick Fatikas, for the record. This is the last case on page nine, 20923S, 620 North Fairbanks. Again, we continued the appeal on an underlying site is issued earlier this morning to August. That appeal needs to be resolved before we can move forward with the special use. So either, we had previously discussed the appeal in the morning and the special use, if successful, on the appeal in the afternoon, or the appeal one month and the special use the following. We'll follow your lead.
Yeah, I think it'd be better if we separate them months. So, so we've got, we've got the appeal in August, right?
Correct.
Okay. So calendar number 20923S will be continued to September 20th, 2024, the 2 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Great. Thank you.
Any other continuances or withdrawals? I'd seen none. Let's call our first case.
19024S and 19124Z. 1400 West 79th Street.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 19024S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed dual-lane drive-through for an existing one-story limited restaurant, White Castle, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, White Castle System, Inc. Two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan, framing plan, elevations dated May 17, 2024, all prepared by Architectural Alliance. Three, prior to issuance of any building and/or occupancy permits related to this proposed use, the site plan is updated to show code-compliant dimensions and striping between the drive-through lane and eastern drive aisle. The landscape plan is updated for consistency with the site plan, and plans are submitted to DPD for review. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your, oh. Go, Joe from the Department of Plan and Development.
Thank you, Chairman. Joe Pena is the planner with the Department of Planning and Development. There's one plan that's missing from that list of three.
Okay.
The layout and paving plan should be part of that list, correcting it for the record.
Okay. Does this one have the, is this different from this? All right, so we are adding a, there's a paving plan that we're adding to the recommendation.
Correct.
Okay. And that, is that also dated May 17, 2024?
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. So we will amend that on the record. With that, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Pulos's expertise, and Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I begin, I want to note that in the findings, in fact, we had included testimony from the applicant, from John Whitaker. Diana Williams, Diana Williams, excuse me, will be testifying instead. So I would like to incorporate her affidavits into the record.
Absolutely. May proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Sanchez and Commissioners of the Zoning Board of Appeals. For the record, my name is Aaron Dorsey of the law firm of Dykemagastid, and we represent the applicant, White Castle System, Inc. I'm joined here today by Diana Williams from White Castle, Sarah Slivnik from Archall Architects, the project architect, and Peter Pulos from BBG Real Estate Services, the project appraiser. The subject property is an existing White Castle restaurant with a drive-through located at 1400 West 79th Street that has been in operation since the 1980s. We are here to request a special use to add a bypass lane to the existing drive-through. And I want to clarify that in the, it's not a dual-lane drive-through. It is a single-lane drive-through within bypass lane. Also, due to the configuration of the site, the applicant also seeks a variation from the standards of the landscaping ordinance. The applicant was before this board in 2017, seeking the same items as today, and was approved at that time, but the applicant did not move forward with its plans. So we are back again seeking approval today. The applicant has had extensive engagement with Alderman Moore and the community, which has resulted in modifications to the site plan and the lot located to the west. We've also sent out the required notice to surrounding property owners and have not received any opposition to this application. We've also briefed Alderman Moore about the applications and have received a letter of support, which I would like to submit into the record today.
Okay. Victor or Ranch?
And I would also just note that we are updating the plans that the zoning staff has requested, and we'll have those to them.
Okay.
That is the end of my testimony. Can I move on to my witnesses?
Yeah, if you just want to have them swear to their affidavits, and then we'll see if there's any questions from the board.
Sure. I'll start with Diana Williams. Diana, you are the district supervisor of White Castle. And I prepared an affidavit on your behalf, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, both an affidavit for the special use and the variation request, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have reviewed those affidavits?
Yes, I have.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be in substantial conformance with those affidavits?
Yes.
I'd like to move on to Sarah. Sarah, you are a senior associate with Archall Architects, the project architect?
Yes.
And I prepared an affidavit, both for the special use and the variation applications on your behalf?
Yes.
And you have reviewed those affidavits?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify today, would your testimony be in substantial conformance with those affidavits?
Yes.
Moving over to Peter. Peter, you are an Illinois licensed appraiser?
Yes, that's correct.
And you prepared a special use report for this, the special use application?
Yes, I did.
And I prepared a affidavit on your behalf, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you have reviewed that affidavit?
Yes, I have.
And if you were to continue testifying today, would your testimony be in substantial conformance with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Going back to regular call. Case number 21124S, 2638 North Hall Street.
Okay. Jimmy? All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 21124S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed massage establishment, provided, one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, MHK Fortune LLC. Two, the establishment maintains clear, non-reflective windows on the street-facing building facade, which shall not be painted over, darkened, or obstructed in any way so that the reception and waiting area is visible from the street. And three, the shower is used only by clients who receive massage services and not as a standalone shower service. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you may proceed.
Good afternoon. James Stola, on behalf of the applicant, from the Law Office of James Stola. This is a, a, an application for special use for a massage establishment in a B32 district. I have with me the, the manager, it's an LLC, MHK Fortune. I have the, the manager of the LLC, who will be running the establishment. Hong Yu Yan, so Ms. Yuan will be testifying. Also, I have Michael Gilligan, who is an MAI appraiser, who prepared the report for this.
Okay.
Okay. Would you please state your name? I'll call Ms. Yuan.
Sure.
Okay. So my name is Hong Yu Yan. I'm, will be the owner of the, of this massage place. I'm a licensed therapy, a massage therapist. And the shower is only for the, so many of my clients will be tax driver and truck driver, just for them to, before or after their massage, to clean themselves. Yeah.
And how long have you been a licensed massage therapist?
Oh, two years, almost two years. Yeah.
And are you, have you worked at another place as a massage therapist?
Yes, but not in city of Chicago, but in during Illinois, like 30 minutes from Chicago. Yeah.
And what are the hours that you intend to keep?
Oh, 10 or 10:30 to 9 or 9:30, like 10:30 to 9:30. Yeah.
Is that every day?
Oh, yeah.
And how many massage therapists do you intend to employ?
So for me, for now, for me, and I intend to hire another one, like part-time in the weekend. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Any questions for this witness? All right, if you want to go to your next witness.
I'll call Michael Gilligan. My name is Michael Gilligan. I'm a general certified real estate appraiser, State of Illinois, and I'm MAI. And I prepared a special use appraisal.
All right, yeah, I, I actually don't remember seeing it. Could you give us the, basically, give us the summary of it?
The summary is that basically this use will, will fit all the general criteria for the special use variance, and it will meet or exceed any of those standards that are, are provided for.
Any, oh, I got a question. Have you had any conversations with the Alderman?
Yeah, I have not had conversations with the Alderman. Tim Knutson is the Alderman in the 43rd Ward, but I did send letters to him. But I had received no objections
Okay.
from anyone, including the Alderman, but he was, he is informed of this.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next case, 21224Z, 2445 West 24th Street.
Okay, would everyone, sir, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed.
Okay. For the record, my name is John Pikarski. I'm an attorney with offices at 55 West Monroe Street. And this afternoon, I represent the property at 2445 West 24th Street. You have pictures of the almost totally rehab building. You should have seen it when my client bought it. It was just a wreck. Windows out, nothing, nothing good about it. My client wants to rehab it, finish rehabbing it, so as to move his family in. In order to do that, since the building is already set on the property line, or on the property itself, we require a decrease in the west side yard, a decrease in the combined side yard, a decrease in the front yard, and to be allowed to put the fence at the property line, which is over five feet high.
Is this a, I mean, is this basically a gut rehab? Like the, the, you're keeping the footprint of the building, you're just rehabbing?
Totally. It was, it was an absolute wreck.
Okay. Now, what, what brought you here? Did you, did you get cited for not pulling permits?
Well, yes.
Okay, okay. So that's, so you didn't pull the permits to do the rehab, and you got caught?
More or less, yes.
Okay.
And, and the client has spent and intends to spend more than a quarter of a million dollars on the rehab. And I'm very proud of the fact that he, he's bringing back a building that is, it was, it was just an absolute wreck and will be a tax-paying residence for himself and his family. So with, with that, I would indicate that I have with me Fernando Rosco. Please state your name.
My name is Fernando Rosco.
And you are the construction manager, as well as the brother of the owner of the property?
Yes.
And if, if the board sees fit to grant this, for these variations that we are seeking, you will complete the rehab and, and turn this property over to your brother and his family, is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
And I have prepared an affidavit on this matter. Have you read that affidavit?
Yes.
And if I ask you the answers that appear in the affidavit, would your answers be the same?
Yes. We went through our concerns.
So, so wait, you're Fernando?
Yes.
Okay. Where's Adolfo? Adolfo is in Mexico today. Fernando is his brother, and they are partners in the construction firm that are doing the rehab to the existing building.
So we don't have the applicant here. So I don't know how we can proceed without the applicant. The applicant has to be here.
Well, I, I. No. The ownership of the property is in, Adolfo. And Adolfo and Fernando are partners in the construction firm that is doing the complete rehab of the existing building.
That's a problem. We need the applicant here in order to proceed on the matter.
Well.
When, when is Adolfo going to be back?
Within weeks, with, within the week. I would also indicate to you that I have an affidavit in the file from Adolfo.
Yeah, but he's got to be, he's got to be present at the hearing. Okay, so there's a, a couple of options. You can either, we can either continue this for a month for Adolfo to be here, or if you wanted to, you know, change the applicant to the, to the company that's doing the, the work, and then you could, you know, you could refile it and, you know, and, and do it that way if Adolfo is not going to be back. But if Adolfo is going to be back, I would say we just continue it to the next move on.
I would concur. If, if, if the board wishes, we'll continue it for one month, please.
Yeah. Okay, so this is calendar number 21224Z will be continued to June 21, the 2 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next two cases, 21324Z, 2424Z, 801 West Melrose.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you very much, Chairman. For the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Brian and Andrea Clifford. The applicants own and reside at the subject property at 1808 West Melrose Street. The subject property measures 26 feet wide, but is only 106.2 feet deep, and it's improved with a two-story, single-family home and a detached garage. The applicants are proposing to take down the existing detached garage and construct a new garage, essentially in its, in its footprint. Again, all at the rear of the lot, and it will remain a detached garage. Their plans also include an open stair that would provide access to a roof deck proposed above the new garage. The issue is that, again, the subject lot is only 106.2 feet deep. So in order to permit the, the, the project, the applicants are seeking variations to reduce the west side setback, the combined side setback total, the rear setback, and relocate rear and open space above the rear garage deck. We have two witnesses available to testify, Mr. Brian Clifford, on behalf of the applicants, and our project engineer, Nick Gazis. And with that, I'd like to call my first witness. Brian, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Brian Clifford, 1808 West Melrose, Chicago, Illinois.
And you and your wife own the subject property at 1808 West Melrose?
Yes.
And as I described it, it's a 26-foot-wide lot that measures only 106.2 feet deep, right?
Yes.
And you're proposing to construct a new detached garage with a roof deck above it at the rear of the lot?
Yes.
And variations are required, and again, we'll get into the details with your architect, but because of that substandard depth dimension, is that right?
Yes.
And in terms of motivation for the project, you're doing this for you and your family to use and enjoy, is that right?
Correct.
So it's not exclusively motivated by future financial gain?
Yes.
And is it also true that several of your other neighbors have similar decks and garage access stairs?
Yes.
So you believe your project is consistent with those neighboring properties?
Absolutely.
And it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yep.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the statements we provided, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Nick, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Nick Gazis, 5349 Washington Street, Skokie, Illinois.
And you are a licensed engineer in the State of Illinois?
That's correct.
And your firm designed the proposed garage with roof deck at the rear of the subject site, is that right?
Yes.
And again, with respect to hardship, the variations are needed in this case, primarily because of the 106.2-foot lot depth dimension.
That's correct.
And we can kind of get into a, a, a quick summary here, but we are maintaining separation between the rear of the home and the footprint of the new garage, correct?
Yes.
So even though we're asking for technical reductions of the setbacks, the existing home setback, as well as the open space behind the home, will remain as part of this program.
Yes.
And Nick, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would.
Thank you so much. Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, 21524S, 2638 West Woolfrem.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation for calendar number 21524S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The board recognizes Mr. Ryan's expertise. Proceed with the short form, Counselor.
Thank you. Again, my name is Nick Fatikas, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Josh Lubin Incorporated. The applicant has a lease for the ground floor retail unit at the subject property, located at 953 West Woolfrem. The applicant is proposing to establish a hair salon within that space. A special use is required because there are other personal service uses located within 1,000 feet of the subject property. I have two witnesses available to testify, first, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Josh Lubin, and our MAI appraiser, Mr. Joe Ryan. Josh, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Josh Lubin, 5730 North Hermitage Ave, Apartment 2, Chicago, Illinois, 60660.
And you are the president of the applicant?
Yes.
And as I stated in my introduction, you're proposing to locate a hair salon at the subject property, is that right?
Yes.
And given the size of the unit, you'll have 10 workstations? And given the size of the unit, you'll have 10 workstations?
Yes.
You yourself are licensed, so you'll continue to provide services, is that right? And then you'll rent out nine of the workstations or chairs to other licensed providers, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you'll operate seven days a week between 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM?
Yes.
And Josh, is it your understanding that my office filed written statements with the board ahead of today's hearing?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI President, LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at 9455 South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
And Joe, you are familiar with the subject property at 953 West Wolfram?
I am.
The scope of your assignment in this case was to evaluate whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria set forth in the code, is that right?
Yes.
And in sum or in short, you did visit the subject property and the surrounding area?
Yes.
You prepared a written zoning report summarizing your findings and conclusions?
I did.
And it's your understanding a copy of that report has been submitted to the board?
Yes.
And in sum, you believe that all the approval criteria are met, is that right?
Yes.
And it's also part of that consideration, the fact that we're replacing a pre-existing salon in the same footprint, the same retail unit?
Yes.
Thank you. And Joe, if you were to continue to testify this afternoon, would that testimony be consistent with the, your written report?
It would.
Thank you. Chairman, that was the short form. I tried. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them now.
Any questions from the board? We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
All right, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand.
Advocate?
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right, Counselor, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Pekarsky here on behalf of Xinli Yu. That's X-I-N-L-I. The X is pronounced S. And the property at 4362 South Emerald. She's the applicant in this matter and the owner of the property. The property is, measures 37 and a half frontage feet by a depth of 125 feet, which contains 3,268 feet. She is seeking to develop the subject site with a two-dwelling unit building. She and her family will live on the first floor, husband and son, and her mother will live on the second floor, which is totally desirable. The variation that we're seeking is from the, excuse me. Not a, not a good weekend. All right. Yeah, I'm okay. The subject site contains 3,268 square feet, which is 94% of the 5,000, 5,000 square feet required for a two-dwelling unit building at the subject site. Again, would introduce my client. Please state your name, address.
Xinli Yu, I'm, the, right now is 842 West, 34th Place.
And if the board sees.
Make sure to speak into the microphone and keep your voice up because we have a court reporter here.
Okay.
Okay, if the board sees fit to.
We still need you to use your microphone, Counselor. Yeah.
If, if the board sees fit to grant your variation that you're seeking, you and your family will live on the first floor of the subject site?
Yes.
And your mother and brother will live on the second floor, is that correct?
Yes.
And we've appeared before the 11th Ward Alderman to introduce ourselves and the subject case, is that correct?
Correct.
And she, of course, has given her approval. I have prepared an affidavit on your behalf. And are you familiar with that fact?
Yes.
And if I asked you the questions that appear in the affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes.
The other witness that we have is Mr. Peter Sterny. Pete, please state your name.
Peter Sterny.
And your occupation, sir?
An architect.
Okay, and you've prepared the plans for the development of the subject site, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it'll be a two-flat on a 37 and a half-foot lot, is that correct?
Yes.
And on your behalf, I've prepared an affidavit containing all the criteria for a variation?
Yes.
And if I ask you the same questions that appear in the affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes, they would.
I have nothing further.
Any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Carla Baumler, and I live at 2417 West McLean.
Okay. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Okay. So what brings you here today?
I am coming forward in my own accord to try to get my property into zoning compliance. As explained in the extensive kind of submission, through the process of not only purchasing the property, but also having some improvements done on it with rooftop pergolas. I found out that the appropriate permits have not been obtained along the way for some items. So coming forward on my own accord, had been working with Alderman's office and they're in support of this application. Did not get in trouble or any sort of citations, et cetera, just trying to be a rule follower.
So give us like a little bit of the history as far as like, when did you purchase the property in relation to like when it was built? Who did you buy it from?
Perfect, yep. So I purchased the property in August 2020 from a developer. It was a new construction property. And that subject property is a three-unit multi-unit building. I live on the third floor and rent out the second and first floors. I have no intent to sell the property and again, kind of doing this to come into compliance. When I purchased the property in August 2020, the, as shown in the pictures from September 2020, the property had that bridge already in place. It had a rooftop garage, et cetera. All done by the developer as stated in the contract, et cetera. So only until January 21, after living there for approximately six months, I went forward with a contract to get the rooftop pergolas added to the building once I had been there for six months. Through that process, did not realize that that contractor who was licensed, not a like, paid cash on the side, like licensed general contractor in Chicago for the appropriate prices, et cetera, that he did not pull the appropriate permits when he was doing his licensed work. And so eventually that, through a lot of reasons escalated to get attorneys involved. And when we had attorneys involved, he confirmed that yes, we will get permits. We realized that was missed, et cetera. And that was all agreed to and reaffirmed in December 2021. And so for almost a year and a half after that December 2021 agreement, I followed up with pitch concepts, attorneys, et cetera. Have multiple emails as noted in the affidavits that they said they were in progress. The city was delayed, COVID delays, it's coming, et cetera. Eventually, I did a FOIA request on my own accord and to find out none of that is possible. None of that was applied for ever on my address. And so in August 23, on my own expense, I hired a permit expediter to again, just get into compliance. And that was only for the rooftop pergolas. And that was what I initially, the only thing I knowingly had potentially an impact or didn't have my eyes wide open going through the process. And when that permit was denied then in December 2023 for the setback requirements required by the property, only then did I realize that the bridge, et cetera, from the original developer in August 2020 was also out of compliance. So that's why there's two applications today, just coming forward in good faith and on my own accord as a rule follower to bring everything up to compliance. And I would also just highlight, I have the Alderman's support through this whole process. Kind of went into it as a learning homeowner to understand the rules I broke along the way and mishaps I've made. And Alderman is in full support of this. I also have a great relationship with all of my neighbors. So in addition to all of the formal requirements through the process, I've also texted every owner occupied building on the street. And I, I know most of them to let them know that this was happening. And they were in complete support and acclaimed me going above and beyond to turn myself in to come into compliance.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I read your application. I, I understood it and I'm, I appreciate the, the, the elaboration on it too. Are there any questions from the board?
Quickly, would you describe the improvements made on your property as consistent with others in the surrounding neighborhood?
In the surrounding neighborhood, absolutely, yes. In the sense, absolutely, adding a rooftop pergola. There are multiple other building, buildings on the street that have garages or like smaller pergolas, but very much consistent.
Thank you.
If I take it, you're not gonna be leaving like a five-star review for Pitch Concepts?
Yeah. Well, how we proceed with them is I can only have so many things on my plate. So hopefully this resolves this whole process. I get permits and what happens with all of that is to be determined.
All right, with that, seeing there's no other questions, we will take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Right, I know. All right. Would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, let's, I, I remember this case. Who wants to go first? All right, Kareem Musawir. Could you state your, your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. Kareem Musawir, 221 North LaSalle Street, Chicago.
Okay. Where are we at?
Oh, good question. We are seeking to amend the application on its face. We have a new architect, new plans, new denial, indicating that we are no longer seeking the reduction of the south side set yard requirement that's adjoining the neighbor's property. However, we're still looking at the reduction of the, the north side setback, which is next to Mr. Donner's property. And also the building permit and plans attached will cure the other violations on the property.
So which?
This is for the swimming pool, of course.
Right, yeah, yeah, right. I, I know it's for the swimming pool. So which? So just the? You're getting rid of the south side setback, is that what you're doing?
Yes, sir.
Eliminating you. You're eliminating your request for the south side setback, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're? And what's left of this application? So yeah, so what relief are you requesting?
Now the relief is to, for the north side setback to continue to be 2.62 feet, which is the, the setback next to, next to Mr. Donner's house. And then the combined side setback requirement would be reduced to 8.87 feet instead of 18 feet.
How are you changing the north side setback? How do you, how are you intending to change it?
The architect has drawn a new plan for redeveloping the pool to meet the requirements. And so there will be a reduction of the size of the pool.
So he still would like to, the north is going to remain 2.62? So the south will be compliant? Right. So all we're worried here about is they would like to reduce the north side setback to 2.62.
Return.
So are you narrowing the pool? Is that what's happening here?
Yes.
Okay. You're narrowing it to get it farther away from your neighbor on the south side?
Correct. As well as reducing the depth of.
What was that?
He will also reduce the depth of the pool to 3.5 feet.
Oh, he's reducing the depth. What's the depth of the pool right now?
Four feet.
Okay. You're reducing it to three and a half? Any other questions from the board? All right, we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Back to the regular order, last case. 21724Z and 21824Z, 3128.
Objectors go right over here, yeah.
Chairman. And I have, I printed out a block plan that was submitted with our, our findings just to have in front of you. I would like to keep one, give each of the three of you one and give the objectors one, is that okay?
Yes. Okay. Would everyone planning to testify, both the applicants and the objectors, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will start with the applicant's case and then once they finish, we will turn to the objectors. Thank you very much. Um, we will start with the applicant's uh case and then, once they finish, we will turn to the objectors. You guys can um then state your objection. You'll also have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant's witnesses if you wish. And then, once that's done, we will go back to the applicant for brief rebuttal and closing. So with that, counselor, you can proceed.
Thank you very much, chairman. Again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Eric Eichler and Andrea Oliva, I'm sorry about that. The applicants uh own the subject property at thirty-one, twenty-eight North Oakley Avenue. Uh, as you can see from the survey, the subject lot is a triangular corner lot with seventy-nine feet of frontage along North Oakley and a hundred and twelve point five feet of frontage along the diagonal alley that runs along our south property line. The interior lot depth dimension is seventy-nine point five feet deep. The property is improved with a two-story, single-family home. The applicants purchased the property with the intent of renovating the building so their family could live there. Uh, given the age and condition of the existing structure, a significant portion of the building was reconstructed us on existing foundations. And all of that work was done with permits and that scope maintained the previously existing building footprint. As the construction progress, uh, project progressed, the applicants worked with their architect to design uh an addition that would provide two garage parking spaces on the first floor and a new third bedroom on the second floor. Given the existing non-conforming building footprint on the triangular lot, their new program requires variations to reduce the south side setback, the combined side setback, the rear setback, and the open space requirement. Uh, we have two witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Eric Eichler and our project architect, uh, Dan Menetoff. Uh, and with that, Eric, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Eric Eichler, twenty-nine, forty, North Damon Avenue in Chicago.
And you and your wife Andrea own the subject property at thirty-one, twenty-eight North Oakley?
Yes.
And as I described it, it's a triangular corner lot that contains approximately thirty-one hundred fifty-seven square feet of total lot area. Is that right?
That's correct.
And it's improved with an existing two-story, single-family home?
Yes.
And the existing structure contains about sixteen hundred and thirty-three square feet of uh building or floor area?
Yes.
And in order to meet your family's needs, you and your wife are now proposing to construct a two-story rear, rear addition that would add approximately six hundred and eighty-two square feet of floor area to the home. Is that right?
Yes.
Uh, again, the first floor would uh provide two new garage parking spaces?
Correct.
And the second floor would be used uh as a primary bedroom. Is that right?
Yes.
In order to permit the project, uh, you're seeking variations again because of the location of the existing two-story building on an irregular triangular shaped lot, right?
Yes.
And provided the board grants that relief, you intend to finish construction and occupy the home as your primary residence?
Yes.
So you're investing in the property for your long, as your long-term home uh for you and your family, right?
That's right.
And because the variations are not aimed, uh, I'm sorry, are aimed at overcoming the triangular lot shape, they're not being exclusively sought for financial gain?
That's correct.
And Eric, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Dan, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Daniel Menetoff, uh, fifty-five, ten Spruce South, West Palm Beach, Florida, three-three, four oh seven.
And Dan, you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And uh, you designed uh the original home renovation project and now the two-story addition plans for the subject property. Is that right?
Yes, I did.
And in order to permit the project, variations are needed again because of the irregular triangular shape and the existing two-story building footprint on that lot?
Yes.
Now, before we get into the specifics of the variations, um, your design was to integrate the proposed addition into the floor plates of the existing home. Is that right?
Correct.
And even on a triangular lot, your design follows the general pattern of development on the block which orients the home or the front of the home at the front of the lot along North Oakley and the garage access off the rear or the public alley. Is that right?
Correct.
Your design also utilizes the seventy-nine point five foot lot depth dimension as best it can, correct?
Yes.
And that gives you the geometry and the, the, the spacing you need in order to fit two legal parking spaces within the proposed uh first floor of the uh addition.
Correct.
Now, with respect to the south side setback reduction, it's being measured from the nearest edge of the proposed addition to the public alley that runs along uh, the rear of the property or the south side of the property at an angle. Is that right?
Yes.
So again, that, that relief or form of relief directly relates to the triangular shape?
Yes, yes.
Um, and that's even though your design maintains over thirty feet of actual setback from the hard corner uh of the lot, again, at the south hard corner, correct?
Yes.
Now, the combined side setback reduction is a function of the south side setback reduction, but to be clear, your design maintains a code compliant three-foot setback on the north side of the subject property.
Yes.
And that's important because the north side of the subject lot is the only side that abuts a residential neighbor. Is that right?
Yes.
And by maintaining three feet of north side setback on our side of the property and adding the existing two point six feet of setback on the neighbor's side, there will be over five and a half feet of separation between the two physical building structures.
Yes.
And that five and a half feet helps ensure an adequate supply of light and air to both properties. Is that right?
Yes.
Now, with respect to the rear setback, again, it's a direct result of the triangular shape. Uh, the substandard seventy-nine point five foot interior lot depth dimension, and again, the footprint of that existing uh structure on the lot.
Yes.
Uh, because you designed, I'm sorry, because your design uh locates the garage directly behind the home at the rear, rear of the lot and it just like, or in uh keeping with the pattern on the rest of the block.
Yes.
And because your design maintains a code compliant height dimension of twenty feet, eight and three quarters inches, and a code compliant three-foot setback on the north side of the lot, it's again, your professional opinion that inadequate sup- supply of light and air will continue to reach our neighbor to the north.
Yes.
And lastly, we're seeking to reduce the rear and open space total, correct?
Yes.
And that relief again is directly related to the uh triangular shape and the reduced rear setback dimension, correct?
Yes.
Even so, your design uh maintains over three hundred and thirty square feet of grade level open space on the south side of the lot.
Correct.
Uh, so the actual open space total being provided actually exceeds the technical open space requirement, uh, just not in the designated rear setback.
Correct.
And then, even with the requested relief, is it your professional opinion that the proposed addition follows the general pattern of development on the thirty-one hundred block of North Oakley?
Uh, yeah, I believe it does.
And with respect to the standards, is it also your professional opinion that the granting of these variations will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the area?
Yeah, I, I don't believe that the variations will be detrimental in, in any sense to the public welfare. Um, the part, project's entirely contained on the subject lot and it will maintain, maintain the property's residential character uh on a residential block in the residential neighborhood.
Uh, will these variations impair an adequate supply of light and air to the adjacent properties?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't believe so. I think the principal home and the rear addition are both within the height allowances um that are allowed under RS three zoning. And I believe that the setback on the north of the three feet is adequate. Um, especially when you take into consideration the um additional space between the property line and the uh northern neighbor's uh actual property uh or building. Um, and uh, I just wanted to say about the light that um, I did prepare a solar sun shading study, um, because I know there was some concern from the neighbors about how the new structure may affect um their property and um, in my opinion, I don't believe that there is um any detrimental effect on, on their property. Um, and I also noticed that um while looking at their deck, it's uh got a existing sun shade or trellis and a side screen, um, which um it fits for, for privacy. It, um, I believe it also uh would block the, the sun as well. Um, so I, I believe that that's probably extra shading.
Um, and Dan, with respect to the solar study, again, it's your understanding that uh you, you prepared or provided that study?
Yes.
And it's your understanding that my office shared a copy of that uh study with our neighbors to the, to the north?
Yes.
And it's also your understanding that a copy of the solar study was included in our finding a fax submitted to the board. Is that right?
Yes.
Uh, Dan, uh, will these variations, in your opinion, increase the danger of fire or endanger public safety?
No, um.
And that's because the project will be fully permitted?
Permits uh from the city and everything is going to be uh comply with uh the fire code.
And uh, with respect to uh increased congestion, uh, will these variations, in your opinion, substantially increase congestion in the public streets?
No, I don't believe that they will. We're providing two off-street parking spaces. Um, and also uh, it's a tight alley and a tight, sharp corner, so I think moving these spaces uh further away from that pinch point is probably better for the neighborhood.
Uh, will these variations, in your opinion, substantially diminish or impair property values in the area?
Uh, I don't believe they will. I think it's a, a residential property, um, and it's consistent with other residential properties in the, the same neighborhood and the surrounding area.
And lastly, in your opinion, will these variations alter the essential character of the locality?
I don't think so.
And that's again, because it's a residential project, a residential building and zoning lot on a residential block, right?
Correct.
And Dan, is it your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with this finding or with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman, uh, briefly before uh we conclude our app, our case in chief, there's a few things I wanted to point out for the record that are reflected on the plan set, but also the block plan. The first is, um, again, we see from the block plan the impact the public alley has um on the, the thirty-one hundred block of Oakley. The first lot that actually has a standard hundred and twenty-five foot depth dimension is actually three lots to the north of us. That's at thirty-one, thirty-six North Oakley. I raise that because one of the standards for variation is whether or not our property, uh, if these conditions apply to other properties. As you can see from the block plan, we're actually the only triangle on the block. The lots to the north of us are more rectangular in nature, but I would argue similar hardships exist for at least the next two properties to the north. Um, I'd also point out that on this particular block, the thirty-one hundred block, four of the six residential buildings favor the north side of those respective lots. And you, we, we called out on our block plan, the north side setback dimension of each of those buildings. We also, you can see that from the aerial zoning map view. We think that's really important because in this case, by maintaining a three-foot uh north side setback, which is code compliant on our side, and then adding in the additional two and a half feet on our neighbor to the north, there's actually five and a half feet of, again, physical space between the structures, which is substantial. And at a minimum, when you apply the code, it's two feet on one side and three feet on the other. We're, we're providing five and a half on just that one side. Um, and lastly, one of the points that's uh shown on the uh plan set and actually the site plan is the dimension, the dimension from the corner of our addition leaves twenty-two feet and eight inches of separation from the alley. Now that dimension, uh, again, from the purposes of zoning, that's interpreted as a twelve point five foot setback because of the triangular lot and they take it at a closer po- point. The reason we're raising that is important is because even though we're asking for twelve-five as the technical reduction, in reality, there will be twenty-two feet, eight inches of setback uh closest to the neighbor to the north. So that leaves open space, open flow, so to speak, between the alley and the rear of our addition. And we think that's really critical to, to, to your review of the, the application and the design of our addition on the triangular lot. Um, with that, again, we uh thank you for appearing our case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members have.
All right, um, I think we'll wait for questions until after we hear from the objectors. Um, so let's go to the objectors. Who would like to speak first? Okay, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Kate Cox, three-one, three-four, North Oakley Avenue.
Okay, and uh, tell us uh why you are here in objection?
I first, I have a couple of documents
Sure.
to provide. Can I come up? Here's an extra one with the pictures.
We didn't make one for there, Jenny.
There you go. Okay. Would you like me to begin?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Um, my husband, Michael Cox, and I, we are opposed to the variance sought by Mr. Eichler primarily due to the inadequate light and air. Sure, do you want me to start over? Okay, my husband, Michael Cox, and I are opposed to the variances sought by Mr. Eichler primarily due to the inadequate light and air our property will have if approved. And first, we do want to acknowledge that this is incredibly awkward. We know that Mr. Eichler and his family are going to be moving in soon. We've so far had a very cordial relationship and we hope that once they become our neighbors that we can have an amicable relationship. Um, and also, please bear with me, because I do not have the experience of Mr. Fatikas. This is my first time doing this and I have tried my best to study up zoning and the law online, so please bear with me as this is my first time doing this. Um, we met Mr. Eichler over three years ago when he purchased his house and have been very neighborly in the few times we've met in person and over text. We have been accommodating and understanding while the house was vacant for a few years and in the past year of demo and construction. We have raked his leaves, allowed his builder to tap into our water for two weeks while they drilled for geothermal heating and cooling. We have dealt with a gate that doesn't close properly for over a year since they removed the post at one slash two. We have dealt with a narrow gate entry since they cut our shared, shared pavement between the houses. We have largely dealt directly with the contractor on these issues and have been more than accommodating in an effort to be neighborly. In May of twenty twenty-two, we received a public notice regarding a variance being sought for a garage Mr. Eichler wanted to build. Around this time, we met with him and he showed us the renderings. We were open to discussing this design, however, we never received notice of a hearing date and it wasn't mentioned again. In January of twenty twenty-four, Mr. Eichler stopped by our house with a gift basket. During this visit, he didn't talk about the newly sought variance and much more imposing design. We felt blindsided when the very next day, a new public notice arrived describing what we are here opposing today. When the very next day, a new public notice arrived describing what we are here opposing today. We follow the process, the zoning board office advised, contacting Mr. Eichler's attorney, Mr. Fatikas, to let him know that we oppose the variances sought and to see if any compromise could be made. We let him know that we were concerned with the addition blocking light on our main floor and basement. We let him know that if Mr. Eichler wanted to build anything on the south side of his property, we would not have any objections and we would entertain any other designs if provided. He said he would talk to Mr. Eichler and the architect to see about an alternate design. Over a month later, we heard back from Mr. Fatikas and he provided us with a solar study. No mention of an alternate design, but just the study. We responded that we were under the impression that he would be discussing an alternate design and he responded that unfortunately, based on the atypical triangular lot shape, there is no viable design alternative. Accordingly, we were, we prepared the solar study for consideration and then see image one. This was confusing to us because in twenty twenty-two, there was a viable design alternative when they applied for a different variance. See image two. That was our last correspondence when it was clear that there was no interest in a compromise. We are not broadly stating that we do not want them to build anything else on their property. We understand the desire to have a garage or more living space and believe there are options to achieve this while not negatively impacting us. We urge you to reject these variances as we will be deprived of adequate light and air and because all the criteria needed to be approved have not been met. I will go through each criterion that we do not believe have been met, starting with our main concern. See other review factors, six, the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property. Our main concern is this loss of light in our daily lives and our potential resale devaluation. The architectural plans and solar study show the addition towering over the remaining depth of our house and extending into our backyard with a height of over twenty-two feet and a depth of over thirty-eight feet and building two feet closer to our property. See image three. Additionally, you can see from an image in their application how much shade comes from their current structure. Image four. We understand how subjective the term adequate is. As the experts on lighting in our home, we have significantly less light in the rooms with obstructed or partially obstructed windows. This consists of rooms on our main floor where we made remodeling choices based on the expected land use of our neighbors, including the removal of several windows and the addition of a pergola and lattice work on our back deck. of a pergola and lattice work on our back deck as adequate light remained. Had the addition been in place, we would have made different design choices. We also have a light-filled basement with several rooms having unobstructed or partially obstructed windows. If this addition is built, we will be deprived of an adequate supply of light to these rooms as well. We have done our own personal solar study and find that we disagree with the solar study provided by Mr. Fatikas. See images five A and B.
Chairman, objection to the introduction of a solar study. We were never provided with a competing solar study. This is the first that we're hearing of any type of additional information.
I'm going to overrule your objection. You can continue.
Thank you. In reference to the June 1 solar study images, one, the large maple trees in front of our homes were not addressed. They indicate that we will have more light with the addition when the opposite is true. And two, their study shows our windows are fully shaded due to our eaves. However, we found no window shading at all from our eaves. Despite the discrepancies, what is glaring with this proposed addition is that there will not be an adequate supply of light. Approval criteria and review factors. A, approval criteria. One, strict compliance with the regulations and standards of the zoning ordinance would create practical difficulties or particular hardships for the subject property. We too have a non-standard lot with an angled rear property line. We were aware of the limitations when we purchased our home. We understood that due to zoning, we would only have a one-car garage, and without significant modifications and remodels to the inside of the house, no primary suite. It wasn't a hardship or practical difficulty, but rather a choice we made. We knew what we were getting, and these limitations were expected, given the significantly lower sale price than standard shaped and zoned lots. Mr. Eichler faced the same choice. B, evidence of practical difficulties or particular hardships. The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only in accordance with the standards of the zoning ordinance. Home prices in Roscoe Village have continued to skyrocket in recent years, and with the beautiful new home the Eichlers built, it seems likely they would yield a reasonable return of their purchase price of $455,000 in 2021. As of May 14, 24, Zillow's price estimate was $774,000. Mr. Eichler made the choice to demolish the existing house and build it brand-new. If they have chosen expensive design and finishes, their potential to yield a reasonable return is largely tied to those choices and not solely on their inability to build an addition to the house. Two, the practical difficulties or particular hardships are due to unique circumstances and are not generally applicable to other similarly situated property. I understand from my correspondence with our ward's chief of staff, Paul Sajavec, that similarly situated property is not defined. I am going based on the definition of other non-standard lots, specifically other triangular lots. There are two triangular lots within walking distance that have garages. Neither are attached to the homes or have second-story additions. These properties are located at 2330 West Berry and 2330 West Wellington. See images six, A, B, C, and D. The variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The Eichler's newly-built home, while very nice, does not reflect the essential character of the neighborhood with their design choices and lack of front porch landing. See image seven. All of the homes in our neighborhood have detached garages or no garages. If this variance is allowed, it will make this already unique and unconforming home that much more pronounced and out of character. See other review factors. The particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical condition of the specific property involved would result in a particular hardship upon the property owner, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. Claiming a hardship is self-inflicted since zoning restrictions and limitations of the property were known at the time of purchase, similarly to when we chose to purchase our home. Four, the alleged practical difficulty or particular hardship has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property. The practical difficulty or particular hardship can only be characterized as being created by the people presently having an interest in the property. They made the strategic decision to demolish the old home and build a brand-new home with the exact same footprint, and then see if they could get a variance to build the addition. We urge you to reject this application due to the various points we presented, and want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Sir, do you have anything to add?
No, she said everything.
Smart man. Do you have, do either of you have any questions for the applicant or the applicant's witness, the architect?
The only question, the only question I have, they made a point of calling out that it was important that they had the proposed addition was going to be built on the north side, and I'm just wondering why that is significant, because there are no neighbors on the south side of the house. We are the only neighbors that they have, and to me, it would seem the opposite, you'd want to build where you're not going to impose on your neighbors, but you call that out as an important point.
We looked at the south side, and unfortunately, because of the existing, because the existing foundation of the house and trying to fit the garage in, there is, literally, the only geometry for putting the garage in is on the northern side. So once we're putting a foundation in for a garage, from a cost perspective, definitely, it would, you'd build on top of the foundations that you're putting in instead of also building. It wasn't like one or the other with the south. At the south side, we couldn't fit a garage under there. There's just, there's no room. So we couldn't build above that to add more floor area.
Could a one-car garage have been built? I understand the desire to have a two-car garage. We would love to have a two-car garage, but was it possible to build a one-car garage?
You could fit, it would, it would extend into the front yard setback. So it would go over, which the house, the existing house is already over, but it would extend more, more than the existing house even as it is now.
It would have been possible to build a one-car garage or something else, just maybe in the backyard, but still further south along the property line versus pushed as far north as possible? Again, I'm asking these because we have been open to some type of compromise, but there really wasn't any dialogue and interest in what else could be done that wouldn't be overbearing on our property.
The question was, could you put one space in the back and one space in the south?
No, if you were to, right now, the addition is butted up against the north side of the lot. If you were to just move everything, maybe it's only a one-car, but move it further south. And again, I understand the desire that, you know, everyone wants to have the biggest, but...
Yeah, then the answer is yes. I mean, you could put a one-car garage, but my client's desire was to have two.
Sure.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant or the applicant's witness before we head back to the applicant?
We do not, thank you.
Okay. All right, at this time, we're turning back to the applicant for rebuttal and closing, and then we'll open it up for questions from the board if we have any.
Thank you. Chairman, I have, I believe, six bullet points that I'm going to try and stick to on the rebuttal. The first is, we kind of heard competing information regarding the standards for approval. The first is light and air. We believe we are continuing to provide sufficient light and air by maintaining a three-foot code-compliant side setback on that side of the lot, by setting back the actual rear, that apex of the proposed attached garage, 22 feet, eight inches from the rear property line. And in this case, that rear property line is the south alley that runs at an angle. And again, the solar study completed by our project architect. We were not aware of a competing solar study. I had no ability to determine who prepared that study, what information they provided. But we do have an architect who did provide a solar study, present testifying to the standards today. The fact that there's shade created is something that's not new to the zoning board of appeals. Every house south of or north of another one is going to cast some level of shade. I'd point out what isn't included in the photos that were provided by the objecting neighbors is whether or not their homes, which are set on the north property line, cast shade north of them, creating an insufficient amount of light and air to the neighboring property. Unfortunately, that conclusion unfortunately is not reached. With respect to hardship, the hardship is specific to the triangular lot. There's no question about it. Our lot is substantially unique compared to even the neighboring properties on our block. We're the only triangle. Every other property is more rectangular in nature, to the point that three lots to the north, they're typical 25 by 125-deep lots. We talked about the financial gain component. This is not a developer trying to maximize floor area or maximize building footprint to maximize sale price. This is a homeowner who wants to live in the house and provide a third bedroom for his, his family, for, for, for his family to use and enjoy and to reside at. So the, or the questioning regarding not being able to sell the property, we're not, we don't want to sell the property. We wanted to add on to the property so that our family can live there. We also talked about the, or going through the exhibits that were shown. I think it's really important, and I'm glad these photos were shown, if you go to the photos, page six, image six, the photos of 2330 West Berry and 2330 West Wellington, what you can tell just from looking at those photos, they're doing exactly what we're trying to do. The front of those properties, both on triangular lots, align toward the front, the primary street. The location of the garage is at the widest point of the lot along the alley. We're trying to do the same thing they're doing. We need variations, presumably like they may probably needed or should have gotten. I don't know the histories of those two particular properties, but using those as examples, we agree, that's exactly the footprint, that's exactly the design we're trying to accomplish with the project that's being presented to the board right now. And lastly, with respect to hardship, and the knowledge of hardship somehow negating the ability to then seek variations, I wholeheartedly disagree with that. The fact that there are hardships and the zoning code contemplates that not all properties are made the same, in these certain circumstances, variations are going to be required. Just because you know it's a triangular lot doesn't mean you can't bring a case to the zoning board and say, look, we're trying to work with the existing structure, we're trying to comply as best we can with the required setbacks, but in this case, my triangular lot has a south-side lot line that functions as a side and a rear, and because of the geometry of the building on the lot, there's no way for us to meet those requirements. Lastly, proof of the hardship is in the statement that our architect made. Even if we were designed, to design a single-car garage on the south side of the property, it's still encroached into the side setback and the front setback. That is a, that is part and parcel with why this is, why this lot in particular is a hardship. A triangular lot is just that, it is a hardship. I probably did closing in there somewhere, so I'm not going to regurgitate that. If you or the board members have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
He said that he's trying to do the same exact thing as everyone else in the neighborhood, but nobody has a garage attached to their house in Roscoe Village, even the triangle lot.
Two of the properties that were shown show photos of garages immediately behind.
Not attached to the house, though. There's a separation.
In the house and the...
I don't know the dimensions of those lots. What I'm saying is the general pattern of development we're attempting to replicate, and the point of that is the longest interior line of the triangle is where we're trying to locate the two parking spaces to meet the requirements of the code.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I do have one, but first, Ms. Cox, for amateur, this was great, so thank you for the time. I know it can be a little overwhelming coming in here, talking to attorneys, so I do want to thank you for that. But for the architect, I do have a question. It's mostly because I suck at urban design, so the dimensions are throwing me off, but if, even if you did the garage on the south side, how close, like from a visual standpoint, I'm just trying to visualize accessing it, it would seem like that would be putting it pretty close to like that corner where that would be an issue, but I'm just trying to figure that out because I can't tell.
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, you would have, you would have to...
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. During our case in chief, we talked about the wanting to separate the location or entrance of the garage, the proposed garage, from that hard corner. Otherwise, it's, I think you called it a pinch point. It's too tight to be able to navigate two cars in and out.
You come from the other direction.
Sir, sir, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but you do not have permission to speak right now.
So again, it was a point, I just wanted to make sure that point was clear.
Yeah, no, I was just clarifying because I'm just, now that I'm looking at it with the pictures, and then, and then I'm, I'm a little slow on this today, so I just wanted to clarify. So is your objection solely for the addition blocking the light or just the house in general? Like, that's the part I was...
The addition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I want to thank everyone for your time on this matter. We are going to take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
Okay, I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the date stated by me. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the continuances are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 19024S and 19124Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 21124S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the continues are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 19024S and 19124Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 21124S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 21124Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 21124S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 21124Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 21324Z and 21424Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 21924Z and 22024Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 21924Z and 22024Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 21924Z and 22024Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 21124S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 21124Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 21324Z and 21424Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 21124S. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 21924Z and 22024Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 21624Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 21724Z and 21824Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 21924Z and 22024Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
No.
I vote no, the matter is denied. I move to approve application for calendar number 21924Z and 22024Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its April 19, 2024 regular meeting. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Oh, all right. We're going to, we're going to go back for a second to calendar number 32523Z. I move to approve application for calendar number 32523Z as amended on the record. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved as amended on the record. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its April 19, 2024 regular meeting. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, the minutes are, the written resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Esposito seconds, Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito.
Yes.
I vote yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.